I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the May 31st, 2022 meeting at 6:00 PM for the Laverne Planning Commission. First item of business, approve the meeting minutes for April 26, 2022. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I didn't get the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Logan.
Did anyone else not get the minutes?
We got a little distracted, we'll get through it.
Here come the minutes. A little worse. Just want to confirm this real quick. You've got down, "I was absent and made motions." In the minutes? I thought I was here. Or no, I was not. I don't think I was here.
I think you made it into the meeting. You did not make a motion.
I would say with that change...
I was actually here, I just came in late. It has not exactly as well.
I noted where you came in.
I think we just need clarification on the first motion.
Per minute.
Diane. I think it's just clarification on that first one.
Because I believe it was just last year. That wasn't when we started. I'm sorry.
I believe it was just you that wasn't here when we started last month. Yep.
Mr. Logan, do you recall?
I do not. I know Mr. Coleman was here two weeks ago at the workshop.
Yes, sir.
That doesn't affect those minutes.
Yes, sir. So we have a couple of corrections. Do we want to make a motion to review these next month?
It's waiting a month to get them done correctly.
Yes, so let's, uh, so I'll make a motion to move the review of the April 26, 2022 meeting minutes till next month's regular meeting. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And we will move on to old business. Item number one under old business. Site plan, Jackson Station 1, new building containing 60 apartments on 4.32 acres requested by Jamie Gillespie. Property located at 317 Old Nashville Highway. Tax map 17D Group D Parcel 29 R3 High Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Jackson Station LP. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a request for site plan approval for Jackson Station, which is an apartment complex of 60 units. And all of those units are proposed to be one or two, one or two bedroom. There's no three bedroom units. So on the screen, you can see there outlined in blue is the site. And this is at 317 Old Nashville Highway. So as you zoom in, you see the roof here of the older home. It's a two-story house. We have pictures of that in a moment. But generally, you can see it's a mostly cleared lot with just a few larger trees remaining. And it is directly across from Woody Thomas Drive. And here's the zoning map. So the green color designates R3, which is high-density residential zoning. And this site has been R3 for a number of years. There is R2 zoning on both sides, as well as across the street. And there is also some C2 zoning on Old Nashville, as well as R1, which is the orange color. So it's really a mix, all along this stretch of Old Nashville Highway. There's several different zoning districts. So this is a picture of the site. And you can see there with the utility pole and some of the overhead lines, coming in on the right is this two-story white house. So there's a picture of that house. And as part of this site plan, the home would be demolished to make room for the new apartments. So this is just an earlier version of the site plan that we kept. This shows during the time when the turn lanes were proposed. The shape of the building, L-shape, has not changed through all these months. So applicant's still proposing L-shaped building. So let's get to the latest plan. So you can see here now, the turn lanes are not shown on this plan. So this parking goes all around the building. Do have three locations for dumpsters along that southeast boundary. And of course, they've lined up the intersection with Woody Thomas Drive. You remember earlier in the winter, that was not aligned. But that's been, uh, that's all been fixed now. And of course, they do have some parking here in the rear that's in this TBA easement. So at the rear of the property are these TBA high-voltage lines that are overhead. And you can see the tower is this diamond shape here is the tower that holds those high-voltage lines. So these are the earlier, I kept these in here. These are the earlier architectural elevations that show more of the siding. So you can compare those with the newest. So this is the newest materials board. So you can see a lot more brick has been added by the applicant versus these earlier versions. So these dark areas were the only brick that was shown earlier and a few months back. But now they've added a lot more brick. So that's the materials board that shows the color and type of brick. And then this bluish or gray color is the fiber cement board, similar to hardy board. And then these are the other two sides of the building. So again, all the dark color is brick, and they have added quite a bit of brick. So it's still a three-story building. There were issues early on with the height. It was well over 50 feet, but now the building complies with the 35-foot height that's in the zoning ordinance. And I think that completes the report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Is there a representative here for this project this evening? If you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jamie Gillespie with James Plus Associates, and address is 1 Bandage Way, Nashville, 372-18.
Thank you, sir.
372-28, excuse me.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board?
I don't know if the, uh, if those material, they were included, I don't know if they were included into packets, but I have these here. If you'd like to see these up close, I can have it here.
Please, if you don't mind, sir. So we can have them. Questions, comments from the board?
I have some comments. I apologize that I wasn't here for the planning commission meeting or the workshop for this. So apologies upfront. So I did get to view that workshop, and I thought I understood in the workshop that we were trying to get you, it was a consensus on the board or with you that we were getting all of the, rid of all the other stuff and trying to put it all towards the turn lane. And now I don't see a turn lane, but I see more brick. So I'm curious to ask, and I know y'all was trying to drop in the elevator off too, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. At the meeting, we discussed, uh, the, I guess, we put together an opinion of cost and submitted it to Mr. Brown for his review. And then based on that information, and then there were a couple of items that were identified, the 80% brick, and then also the elevator was identified. And the cost of the elevator was, the elevator was removed, and the cost of that elevator was applied to the, the fund that would be submitted for the turn lane.
Okay, so you're, we're doing, you guys are doing funds towards the turning lane, and we'll do the turn lane as the city at some point then. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for the clarification on that. So my second comment on that is, especially to this board, because I heard the comments about fire. Fire was asked about using an elevator during a fire. And I would totally agree with Fire Marshal Brinkley that by no means ever would you ever use a elevator during a fire. So every one of my comments have been for that elevator is for personnel, emergency personnel in general, to use that for medical purposes when some, they're getting somebody out of a house that's unable to move on their own power, right? So when we're trying to carry even a 200-pound person downstairs, especially three stories, I see a huge disaster there, especially, you know, I could say probably pretty good that a work comp claim for, for a back injury, you know, you get two or three of those, that's going to be close to $100,000. You throw surgery in there, we're going to be over $100,000. So I hate that I missed that meeting because my thought process is, is that we are doing a disservice to our employees, not only to the residents of this place by not putting one in. So that's my big comment for that. Other than that, the building looks better. I do appreciate you going 80% on the, this is 80%, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it looks, and it looks, looks good. I appreciate that. But that elevator is, that's, that's a, it's a sad situation for me. And then also the design, you know, I asked for access to every building or every room from the outside, you know, and not long hallways. So that's my comments. I don't know if you want to address the elevator or not, that's totally up to you. You don't have to. I'm making that comment more for the board.
I understand. I appreciate it very much. I know it's our, it's our intent to always provide a code-compliant design, and it's my understanding that what we are providing is code-compliant. And, and so I'll...
I'm not, yeah, and I don't doubt that you're not code-compliant, but my first aspect is always, I'm looking for health and safety problems, and that's going to be one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I've got a question that may require Mr. Gillespie to come up, but can you help me understand which brick goes with which on your, your color diagram here? I mean, I know this one's your...
They point to these, these little numbers, point to a particular one. So, so I know it's set up that way, like this, whatever that number or whatever that sequence is.
Okay, so the, the last number would be the number then?
I think that's the way to do it.
Okay, because they're all 300s, so...
I have a question. You had told the commission at the workshop that you had deemed that you would not be able to put the turn lanes in because you couldn't acquire the property. Is that, is that correct?
The, the, there was a couple of things associated with that, just the, the cost of the acquisition, acquiring the right-of-way, and, and just the overall costs being, being required to do that.
I mean, is the city going to be able to get the property cheaper than he can? I mean, we're taking on the burden of that.
Well, we, we would do condemnation, so it's whatever the, the regular market value is. If the, we typically, whenever we're doing any widening project that's determined, I think lately we've been using a group called PRO.
Crofton Associates.
And so what they do is they typically go out, determine how much is actually needed. And then what they do is, on behalf of the city, go make an offer that's, that's fair market. Then if that's rejected, then it goes through condemnation through Evan and Rutherford County Courts.
And, and Madam Vice Chairman, also, just to kind of piggyback on what the mayor said, the, the developer does not have the power of eminent domain, so they couldn't require the owner of the property to sell them that, even if they wanted to pay him $100 million. If he said, "I don't want to sell it," they can't do anything about that. That's not the same with the city. The city can take the property at any point in time for a public project. So it's an impossibility for the developer to be committed to acquire a property that it doesn't have the legal authority to actually acquire.
Sure. Did you attempt to get the property, and you were told no?
We had, we had discussions on that about what was going to be required, and talked to adjacent property owners both to the, I guess, between my bearings, right, east and west, or both sides, right and left. We had discussions, but, but quite frankly, the owner, the owner's attorney got, he got his attorney involved and got to looking at, at the overall scope of that. And because of those reasons, we've, we've requested to give this different consideration.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Coach, could you mind just explaining the, the discussion about the improvement participation agreement, if you would, just because of the briefing, if you would, please?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. And I think Mr. Gillespie has a copy of the proposed agreement for the planning commission to review, and he's brought it with him. I told him that the technical way to introduce this would be to submit it to the planning commission to make it part of the record, so that any discussion about this cost-sharing document, there's no dispute about what document we're referring to, not some other draft, but this particular draft that's been signed. So Mr. Gillespie, if you want to tender that to the planning commission and make it part of the record, now would probably be the time.
Yes, I would like to do that, and I, and I apologize.
This is the one with the regional signatures, I only brought, I only brought the, I do have one copy, I just, I didn't realize.
Ms. Kobe, you've reviewed this document?
Yes, sir. Are you satisfied with? Yes, sir, I am. And I'd be happy, Mr. Coats, if you want me to, to share just sort of the genesis of the documents. As Mr. Gillespie said, there were conversations about the fact that the developer did not want to have to put those different items into the building, and also could not afford to pay for the complete widening of the road. I forgot what the cost estimate was, but it was close to $750,000, I think, for if they were to undertake the lane widening, assuming that they could acquire the real property or if they had the authority to. And so my understanding is what the developer has now agreed to do by virtue of that agreement is to contribute $175,000 towards the widening of Old Nashville Highway, which is a city project that is underway. At least the survey, I think, is, is, if it hasn't started, it will start soon. And then obviously, the mayor and Mr. Coats can speak more to this, but the plan is to obviously widen Old Nashville Highway. And that this money that the developer is offering to contribute would be, would be earmarked for the sharing of that cost. Now, as I understand it, in exchange for that $175,000, they will maintain 80% brick on the exterior, but they will not install the elevator, and they won't undertake themselves to actually widen the, the lane. That agreement that you have in front of you, the net effect of that is, is that if the planning commission elects to approve the site plan as submitted, on the condition that the agreement is approved by the city council and the money is paid, that the developer will not be able to pull a permit to, to construct these apartments until the city is in receipt of the $175,000 towards the widening of the project. But that's a decision for the planning commission to make with respect to the site plan, and then ultimately for the city council to make, whether or not it agrees to accept that contract. And I'm happy to answer any questions or stand corrected if I've spoken misspoken.
Thank you, sir.
In my opinion, it seems like we've gone way backwards on this project, because we had the 80% brick, we had the turn lanes, we had the elevator and stuff, and now all of a sudden, all that's going, well, not the brick, but the elevator's going away, the turn lanes are going away, and the burden's going to fall on the city, other than the $175,000 to put the turn lanes in.
The turn lane we didn't have. It was to the point where, at first, they discussed doing it, they ran into their roadblocks, then they came back with the traffic study that showed it was not required for that traffic study. And then to do a new one, which the city could do a new one, but we can't, we couldn't hold up any projects on that area for that traffic study that we're electing to do, that may or may not contradict it. So that was, was that just, I thought that was brought up at the workshop.
We did, because, because I commented that the traffic studies, to me, it, you know, I know they're, they're set on certain numbers, but I live in an area where a traffic study was done that says it'll hold this kind of traffic, and it doesn't. So I don't put a whole lot of faith in the traffic studies personally.
So just my, a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Number one is that as a city, we are surveying and planning on widening Old Nashville Highway. We all know it's a bad road, people that drive it know it every day, that it's a problem, and we need to do something about it, and we are moving towards that end. I think Ms. Rutledge brings up a good point about the lift. However, because it's not in our regulations at the present time, we can change that. At the present time, it's, it's, it's not a requirement. It's becoming a bit of an issue. Now, you know, it's a valid point as far as the safety goes, but this board, while going through the process of updating the sort of regulations as well as zoning, that would be the time to put it in, and I would agree with that. The issue today is, as well as all the other applicants tonight, is we're dealing with the regulations that we have in front of us today. So it's, it's a real issue, and I appreciate the applicants work with us, which they have. I just have another question for the applicant. On, on the vertical, I'm calling it blue, is that the booth bay blue, as that was referred to? So it looks crayon here, but blue on here?
Yes, sir. I believe that's correct, and I think some of that's just the, the printing and the colors, color schemes here.
So with that being said, it's, the, the issue that the planning commission runs into for many, many years is that when the applicant meets all our requirements, and we turn them down, they have a possibility at their wish to, to come back and, and sue the city. At the present time, they meet the guidelines, and they work with us with the, the turning lanes when we widen Old Nashville Highway. So at the end of the day, it's called a compromise, as far as I'm concerned. So with that, I'll make a, a move to approve the site plan on the following conditions. One, that the improvement participation agreement presented by the developer to the planning commission tonight is approved by the board of mayor and old man. And two, the city receives the payment provided for the improvement participation agreement.
So we have a motion on table, do we have a second?
Our second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Aye. Motion passes. Give Mr. Gillespie.
Thank you very much. I know my client is really committed to, and looking forward to bringing affordable housing to this site, and so we, we do appreciate being able to work with the city and work through this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next item, item number two. Final plat for Ridge, Phase 4, Lot 401, one open space lot for pool on 0.55 acres requested by Wamblyn Associates. Excuse me. Property located off Rocky Trail, Tax Map 29, Parcel 41.04, NPO Parcel 41.02, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, and R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by BNF Ventures. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. This is a request for final plat approval for the ridge, and this is Phase 4, Lot 401. This lot will make it possible for the development to have a pool and pool house. As you can see on the screen there, outlined in blue, so this is the area that we're talking about. The blue outline actually involves this item and the next item, but this lot has, as you know, has been taken out as a separate approval. So this is about a half acre, it's .55 acres. But anyway, in just a few minutes, you'll see the rest of these lots on a separate plat. But generally speaking, this is the area that we are looking at tonight. So the pool lot will go roughly where I'm pointing with the red dot. And you remember from the workshop, the developer is proposing a parking lot with a pool and pool house. This is the zoning map, you see there in the orange. Most of this is R1 Low Density Residential, which is the orange color, but just a small part here at the bottom is also R2, which is Medium Density Residential. So this shows the minor final plat for this lot. And again, you can see, this is just a dead-end cul-de-sac. Rocky Trail is just a dead-end cul-de-sac, and then Smoky Ridge Drive comes out to the Some photos of the property. See, just the area of, as you might expect, a lot of trees, pre-development. And there's no remaining comments. One through three have been finished, they should have been removed. So there's no technical items remaining on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments for the board on this application?
There was another comment, though, on the back, but it's number four, is that also been taken care of?
Yes, sir, they, they've all been taken care of.
Thank you, sir.
With all your intentions being addressed, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve as submitted.
I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rutledge, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number three. Final plat for Ridge, Phase 4, six lots totaling approximately 2.4 acres requested by Wamblyn Associates. Property located off Rocky Trail, Tax Map 14, Parcels 41.02, 41.03, 41.04, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, and R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by BNF Ventures. Mr. Logan.
So this is also final plat approval. So these are the neighboring lots at the Ridge, Phase 4. And you can see there on the screen, the area that's outlined. And so moving in there, the cul-de-sac that you saw on the plat, and you'll see in just a minute, but this is the rest of those lots as you go around that cul-de-sac. So a total of six lots on this plat. And same pictures. So this is the plat. So there's six lots arranged around that cul-de-sac. Five are buildable lots, the sixth is an open space lot, which will become detention. And then the previous item, you can see the half-acre lot for the pool and pool house, which is not part of this plat. Total size of this plat is 2.4 acres. And of course, all these are for single-family development. And same as the previous, the one technical item has already been taken care of, so there's no items remaining on this report.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion, accept or submit it, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to accept, my, 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 Coach, a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, under new business. Site plan, the Ridge amenity area, open space, community pool and pool house on 0.5 acres requested by Wamblyn Associates. Property located off Rocky Trail, Tax Map 29, Parcel 41.04, NPO Parcel 41.02, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, and R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by BNF Development LLC. Mr. Logan.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think the applicant actually has some info to add to this item before we discuss in detail about it.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, if you don't mind, sir.
Danny Wamble, 216 Centerview Drive, Brentwood, Tennessee.
Thanks, sir. Property located off Rocky Trail, tax map 29, parcel 41.04, NPO parcel 41.02, R1 low-density residential zoning district, and R2 medium-density residential zoning district. Property owned by BNF Development LLC. Mr. Logan.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think the applicant actually has some info to add to this item.
Absolutely.
Before we discuss in detail about it.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, if you don't mind, sir.
Danny Wumble, 216 Centerview Drive, Brentwood, Tennessee.
Thanks, sir.
I was informed, just as the meeting was starting, by representatives from the development team, that they have been made aware that there are several neighbors that aren't happy with this design, and that they want to give them input and control of what gets built in their neighborhood in the way of an amenity for a pool. And in order to do that, they've instructed me to withdraw this application, and they, like some other developments have done, they have decided they will deed this lot to the homeowner association and give them a monetary gift and allow them to design what they want and build it the way they want it to be built.
That's, that's very amicable.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll consider this withdrawn, or shall we make a motion, sir?
Just one thing I want to thank both the engineer and the, the owners. I know we'd gone, we'd had some conversations about the, the size of some of the items here, and so, and I'd sent over some emails from some, from some residents. So thank y'all, and thank, thank the owners as well for working with the residents.
Well, you're welcome, and Mr. Jimmy Pitts is here tonight representing the development team, and I, I had a conversation with Ms. Sanders right before the meeting started. I didn't know this at that point, so I wasn't withholding information that this was revealed to me as the meeting was starting. So, but thank you.
Mr. Coates, should we make a motion to withdraw?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate thing to do.
I'll make a motion to withdraw, do we have a second?
Our second.
Second by Mayor Cole, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Onto our next item, thank you. Final plat, HPR Sandhill Village Lot One, six livework units on 0.49 acres requested by Wumble and Associates. Property located at Sandhill Road and Cash Court, tax map 14K, Group A, parcel one, PDR planned-density residential zoning with R1 base zoning district. Property owned by Abnan Shreedan. Mr. Logan.
This is a request for final plat approval for, for Sandhill Village Lot One, and this constitutes six livework units on .49 acres. So you can see here on the screen, this is at the corner of Cash Court and Sandhill And moving in, this site's just west of the Dollar General store at Ferguson Sandhill Road. So the new retail center at the corner of Cash and Sandhill is where I'm pointing there on the screen. So this is right across the street on the other corner from that market that's been built in the last couple of years. So this is Zone PDR, which is planned-density residential with the R1, R1 zoning, the base is R1, and the applicant's proposing a development of six two-story livework units on this site. And let's see, some of the photos here, so this is, you'll be looking south down Cash Court, and right here in the foreground to the right is the vacant lot that's the subject of this plat. And then the market that I spoke of earlier, this would be taken from their driveway, looking across the street, again at the vacant lot. Then this is one more. So Sandhill Road's just here to the right, this is the intersection of Cash and Sandhill. So this is the plat submitted by the applicant that shows the layout of these livework units. And there were a few comments at the workshop, and those have been taken care of, so I apologize that these notes are down here at the bottom, I thought they were taken off, but somehow it didn't print that way. So there's nothing outstanding left on this HPR final plat.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board on this item?
Make a motion to approve as submitted.
We have a motion to approve as submitted, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Logan, did item number six defer, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's the Murfreesboro Road, correct. They, they deferred.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number seven. Site plan, Sound, Sandhill Road Townhomes, seven two-story units on 0.87 acres, requested by SEC, Inc. Property located on Sandhill Road, tax map 14, parcel 48, R3 high-density residential zoning district. Property owned by Sandhill Partners LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a site plan request for seven two-story units on Sandhill Road. The acreage is .87, so you can see the property here on the screen, outlined in blue. This is a very shallow lot, but it's fairly wide. So zooming in, you can see the trees on the site, it's, it's still mostly forested, but it's got townhomes, as you know, all around it that have been built recently. So the zoning is R3, high-density residential, you can see that here on the screen. This dark sort of military green color is all R3, high-density. So here's some site photos, and a lot of trees on the site, and you can see the townhomes I mentioned that have recently been completed, they're in the background. This site is proposing a parking area, and if you remember last workshop, they were proposing a long, one long building with seven units in a row, and that has been revised now to show two buildings. One's got three units and the other building has four. And then the parking lot has been placed in the middle. And they are providing 22 parking spaces, and that meets the city's parking requirements. One of those is an ADA accessible space. And the PDF and the, applicant did not send us an updated PDF, it may have to do with the holiday, but at any rate, this is the workshop PDF, but your plans, they did submit the correct plan, so what you have is official.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Is there a representative here for this project? You'd be so kind, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, my name is Ousah Ahmed with SEC, 815 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, North Boulevard, Tennessee.
Firstly, thank you for the change, I know you weren't here, but.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all for the change and the number of amenities it seems like you've put in, the number of amenities you've put in on this project, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's my statement. Questions or comments from the board?
I'd just like to say, appreciate you working with us on several items that were brought up by the commission, including the driveway width and added trees, amenities, and it looks good, and I'll make motion to accept the plat, sorry, the drawings made dated May 23, 2022.
We have a motion with the date stated by Alderman Coates, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item number eight. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, rezoning of property requested by SEC, Inc., 4.3 acres. Property located at 237 and 245 Cheney Boulevard, tax map 28, parcel 10 and 11. Current zoning district, A agricultural zoning district, proposed zoning district, R3, high-density residential zoning district. Property owned by Joe Voner. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone property, property located at 237 and 245 Cheney Boulevard. This is 4.3 acres, and currently this property is zoned agricultural. You can see here, this is on the east side of Cheney, north of LeBarn High School, and zooming in, you can see the property better, this has been a longstanding non-conforming use in the city of LeBarn. There's been a few uses on the property over the years, but it has been zoned ag during that time. So this request is to go from agricultural to R3, high-density zoning. And you see there on this zoning map, so the brown and green pattern signifies the agricultural district, so both of these parcels are zoned agricultural, and then a large area to the west across Cheney is also agricultural. And then to the north begins a long stretch of R3 zoning. And once you get there to the intersection with, I believe that's Sanford, the R3 actually is on both sides of the road, all the way to the three-way stop there at Old Nashville Highway. So it's got ag in the vicinity, then quite a bit of R3 to the north. To the west and south is this large area of R2 zoning, and so it does have some single-family that touches it as well. This is concept plan, of course, you know, it's not binding, it's just provided as a visual aid by the applicant, but they're proposing somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 units, give or take, at least with this concept plan. And there have not been, staff only received one phone call, and the signs have been up about a month, and I've received one phone call, and that's all about this property, and they were just wondering what the signs were for, so. And that completes the report, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I, I have a question, please.
Staff for it.
For the applicant.
Applicant. If you'd be so kind, once again, name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening again, Ousah Ahmed with SEC, 815 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, North Boulevard, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I'm sorry, I apologize for calling you up here, because I wasn't here for the meeting. My question is, is there any reasons why you wouldn't consider the R2 for what's surrounding, or even maybe even R1 for, I understand what those other zones are, but they're pretty much close to R1, or should, that's a different conversation for a different day, but, and he can come up, that's fine. Just state your name and address.
Austin Keppley, address 2037 Harbor Drive. For the parcel, to be 100% transparent, cost for what we can acquire the land for, and just with Cheney being as busy as it is, I feel like it's really, kind of leans more toward, towards an R3. Plus, there's a pretty big rock wall that separates this from that R2 right behind it, so those are kind of the three factors for us. And does everyone's concept plan have the playground on it?
Yes.
Okay. The PDF didn't show it, so I was worried about that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments on this item? We will be sending a favorable or unfavorable recommendation.
And we, we've also got some exterior photos, too, if anyone wants to see what we're shooting for here.
Does this drawing show the maximum number of units that you can put on the?
I believe zoning allows for 14 per acre.
It's an odd number, it's about 14.
Yeah, so we're, we're under that, we're not trying to max it out completely, and we've also removed some units to get the community amenities in there with the playground.
Also, there is a, another image, I didn't get to it, so this is also provided by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Any further questions or comments?
I mean, the only comment, again, I have is that, you know, I'm not against growth, I'm just tired of seeing all these, you know, everything being rezoned to R3 so we can get as much as we can pack on it. That's, that's for the board, not for, for you, so.
You're fine.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Let's, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, send an unfavorable recommendation to the Mayor and Alderman for the rezoning.
I have a motion to send an unfavorable recommendation, do we have a second?
I'm gonna second that.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we need a reason?
Res zoning, not necessarily.
Okay, just wanted to cover our backs.
Thank you, Mayor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, we will be sending an unfavorable recommendation to Board of Mayor and Alderman. Next item. Item number nine. Amendment to final plat, the retreat at Finch Branch, Section One, Lot 110 and 111, two lots totaling approximately 0.73 acres, requested by Hudson Steel, property located on Centennial Drive, tax map 17L, Group D, parcel 23 and 24, R2 medium-density residential zoning district, property owned by E3 Construction Services LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is an amendment to final plat for the retreat at Finch Branch, and this is Section One. These are lots 110 and 111, and the applicant is, has been working through some drainage issues with the city, so that's the purpose of this amendment to the plat. This is about three-quarters of an acre, .73 total for these two lots. So they're outlined in blue here on the screen, and so you can see the development that's been taking place for the last year or two out at Finch Branch. And this is the intersection of Irvin and Greenwood Drive, if you haven't been out there, so this is now a three-way stop. I believe that's right, freeway stop?
Yes, sir.
So that kind of gives you the, get your bearings. So just zooming in, it's, it's these two lots, and there's been some drainage easements that were necessary for these lots. Then on the zoning map, you can see this large area is R2 medium-density residential. And then this is the plat submitted by the applicant that shows lots 110 and 111, and the changes that are necessary to accommodate the drainage. And all the technical items have been taken care of, and so there's not any remaining. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board on this item? I guess this is more housecleaning, it's every time, sir.
I'm so sorry. I have a question, maybe, maybe staff can answer this. We're doing this to eliminate the flooding that's currently, or been happening for many years, that goes down across Greenwood.
This, this will help. I'm not gonna say it's gonna cure every bit of the water problem at the, at the bottom. Basically, when they started doing these houses, though, they've, they've realized that no matter what they do, unless they do this easement and get the water to come back toward the roadway and go under, of course, in that drainage pipe and go over to that other pond, it's gonna be a drainage issue for all those other lots right there. So this, that's basically what this is for, is just to pick up that water that's causing that problem, which will help with.
The other issue.
The other, but it's, like I said, it's, that's not all the water that's, that's getting down to that other location.
Correct, yeah. I'm, I'm aware of that, I'm just, I know that there's been some complaints from, I grew up in that neighborhood, so I've had some complaints to me saying, hey, this is gonna get worse, this is getting worse.
Right.
And I wanted, this is what's helping make, fix that.
This, this will help.
Not make it worse.
Yeah, it ain't gonna make it worse, it'll help.
Okay, good, thank you.
And there were a few things changed at the beginning of construction that helped with some of the flooding over on Elm, where it would go over through those woods, right next to it, and through the backyards of those houses, because we got a lot of phone calls with the first big, big rain right there, and then that house right at the corner where Irvin and Greenwood meet, right there, so they were definitely ringing some phones and going out in some wet conditions, but yeah.
Well, it's gonna be hard to fix all of that problem, I mean, that creek goes underground for numerous ways till you get back over to Centennial, so, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that would have to be done to fix it permanently, but as long as this is what's making it better, that's what I, I was wanting to know.
This will help also, once the subdivision gets to where they put the final topping on, that will. on, that will help a whole lot. Because right now, the water's just not getting in the immolts along the roadway.
Right.
Since that final topping's not down. So it just compounds. By the time you get to the bottom of the hill, it's a mess right now.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions or comments?
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. We have a second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number 10. Preliminary plat, the retreat at Finch Branch, Section 3, 42 lots on 16.25 acres requested by SEC, Inc. Property located off Irvin and Greenwood Drives, tax map 17L, Group A, parcels 8.04, 8.06, and 8.07. R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Finch Branch Building Group, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a request for the preliminary plat for Section 3 of the retreat at Finch Branch. So you can see, it's this large area here outlined in blue. Same area as the last item, just a little bit further down. And all this area is zoned R2. And this preliminary plat is for 42 lots on 16.25 acres. Here's some site photos. So this is Finch Branch here and the construction road, you can see, that's been cut so they can cross over the creek. And a closer view of that construction road. So if you've been out there, you've noticed the tree line there along Finch Branch. So if you come out of that three-way stop and enter the subdivision, the, basically Section 1 is this side of the trees. And then Sections 3 and 4 will be built on the other side of the creek. So here's another view. You can see the long tree line there that's currently, that's Finch Branch. And you can see some of the roadwork and the curbs that have been put in. So this is the plat that was submitted. And this shows the lots in Section 3. And basically, they're just all built to R2 zoning. So 10,000 square foot, minimum lot size, and all of the details that go with R2. They do have a few cul-de-sacs that you've probably seen that they're proposing. And the comments were basically minor, almost no comments two weeks ago, but they involved the driveway connections. So those driveway connections have been shown. And so there's no comments left on this before. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. So all comments are done and all driveways are in the appropriate?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
I make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted by Mayor Cole. We have a second.
I second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number 11. Preliminary plat, the retreat at Finch Branch, Section 4, 38 lots on 12.03 acres requested by SEC, Inc. Property located off Irvin and Greenwood Drive, tax map 17L, Group A, parcels 8.04, 8.06, and 8.07. R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Finch Branch Building Group, LLC. Mr. Logan.
So this is a request for preliminary plat approval at Section 4 of Finch Branch. And this is 38 lots on 12.03 acres. And it's the same part of town off Irvin and Greenwood Drives. And so you can see the pictures here, again, crossing Finch Branch. So this will make way for Section 3 and 4. And you probably noticed on the plan, this section is split up and Section 3 is kind of all contiguous, but this section has a couple of different areas that are non-contiguous. So they probably noticed that on the master plan. But this one area is further to the east, but it's still Section 4. And then the other area is on the opposite side and also Section 4. But again, they're not continuous. And there's no technical comments on this item. And that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Seems like I recall we had a couple of things that we discussed.
Mr. Chair, I got a question for the applicant.
Please, if you'd be so kind, sir, come to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you.
John Minor with SEC, 815 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murphysboro.
Thank you.
So far, looking at it, Lot 236 doesn't show a driveway.
Are you looking on Sheet 5 of 5 or 3 of 5?
I was looking at 3 of 5.
We don't show driveways on the master plan. If you go to Sheet 5 of 5, you'll see a more detailed view that shows all the driveways.
Okay, so the little strips then?
Correct.
What are those supposed to be on Page 3 of 5 for each of the other lots?
Would you mind stepping up here so we can point it out to you, my friend? Make sure we're all looking at the same thing.
Those are driveways. They're just not hatched. The previous sections are hatched, where it's a little bit more obvious. This is shown, it's just not hatched differently. There is a line there, it's just back. So it is visible.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
I have just, a curious question for me is, why did you spread your phases out? Like Phase 4 is so far apart.
That is a good question. That was a more me as a engineer and planner role so that the city of Laverne got the bridge crossing across Finch Branch as well as made the existing connection to Spring Street and Shiloh Drive to the south with the previous section.
And Phase 3.
Yes. So make sure that you got all your connections through the development. Just go ahead and do that on the front end.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
A motion to accept as submitted by Mr. Rutledge. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Coates. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. And our final item, item number 12, bonds and letters of credit, Mr. Green.
Everyone should have the bond list in front of them. Everything is up to date as far as the lot number and things like that. We do have two that will expire in June and then one in July. The banks have been contacted and those are, the works have been extended. So everything should be ready for when we submit to you next month. It'll, they'll all be, or those two will be extended for a year and go from there.
Very good. Any questions or comments on bonds and letters of credit? That meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.